Any public discussion on any of your next agenda?
I need some minutes, please.
One minute? He needs an agenda.
Agenda, agenda.
We haven't talked to that point, but I'll...
No, I need the minutes. We're, we're, the minutes here, the minute.
They're free to me.
I need agenda now. I was on that, I was already there.
Mike, do you need to get anywhere before we can move you up on the agenda?
That would be fantastic if you were able to do that.
That's right. Well, we'll, we'll take what Mike got.
Morning, thanks for having me. We, as you know, our, the regional airport that we have, we're doing an overlay project that's completely funded through past the grant that we have and some matching funds that, that the city's done prior to the agreement where it became a regional airport. So while that company's in town, I wanted to get a quote on Ohio Street because Ohio Street's really bad. It was bad since 25 years ago when I was a kid. And I was told, and I can't find any records, that 30-plus years ago, it was a county-city joint, since that was on the edge of town, and so many trucks used that to repave that. Based on bidding laws and our charter and ordinance, to utilize Altus paving while they're in town, I cannot spend more than $50,000. And I don't have 50,000, I don't have one with $50,000 even if I did, but to keep within the Oklahoma bidding act, I can only spend less than $50,000. For $50,000, they can grind up and redo a three-inch overlay from Highway 64 north to Duncan Drive, just that few, five or six hundred feet. That'll be a, they'll grind it up, repack it in, and it's a three-inch overlay. What I'm asking you to consider is the rest of the road just needs a two-inch overlay. If you guys, while they're here, start a contract with Altus Paving Gravel so we don't have to pay another activation fee to see, based on talking to them, less than $50,000 or $49,000 and some change would, would go roughly from Duncan to 12th Street. If you guys were, were able to, to help in any way with that project.
Well, Mike, we can.
Okay.
I mean, we could help you with labor, we can help you with equipment, but we can't help you with materials. That's, that's where we're limited. Any in-kind services we can provide, we will, except for paying for the material, so.
Fair enough. Didn't hurt to ask. All right.
If we could, we can.
Okay.
So, if we could, if you were getting it hauled in and you needed somebody to help lay up with a grader or even part of the frame, we could, we could help.
It's all contracted material, so. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, sir. Appreciate it.
Hey, we appreciate your efforts and we appreciate anything we can do.
Okay, I'll keep trying. We'll get it done eventually. Thank you, guys.
Manage from it.
You make a motion on that?
Hmm?
You make a motion on that first?
No, I don't think so.
I can see what's down there, so this here, it wasn't this morning.
No, yeah, it's, it's, I turned the corner at 58th, I slid around the corner.
It's been a long period.
Well, that's what, that's...
What's the deal?
Yeah. What?
I said, "Do you want that?"
What's the name of that contract that he said Altus was?
Paving.
Altus paving.
I meant to ask him.
I'm moving, step in there. All in favor? Tommy, do you need to get somewhere?
How do you want to do it?
Well, we can move you up if you need to get, okay, let's, let's hear from Tommy on his contract.
Well, once again, you guys have signed the budget, so once the budget's signed, we need to have a contract signed with Oklahoma State and the county, so there's, there's three copies there. What usually happens is we get one for the county, one for Oklahoma State, and one for our office, so once those are signed, I'll take all those, send them to campus, they'll get them signed and send them back.
Oops.
Got surgery over there.
It worked good.
That's all right.
We appreciate all the support that county commissioners give us.
We appreciate you too.
Yep, I'm moving, step in there.
Second.
Day. All in favor?
All right. Thank you, man.
Thank Tommy, Tommy, give up your good word.
Thank you.
Oh, him and old Walter.
Let's keep skipping. Let's keep skipping.
You want to put that off as long as you can, huh?
Yep.
Put it off, just sign the Cherokee publishing one.
Do I have to sign the Cherokee publishing one?
That's the one we don't want even considered today.
Yeah, very good. Where'd you check over there?
Waste of nicotine?
That's nicotine, that's, that's mine.
That's your stressful being, go.
Don't forget, I need a payment roll before they leave on Thursday.
It's on our calendar for Wednesday.
That'll be perfect.
How come last time that was just continued?
Kathy wasn't here, so I make a...
You're at work?
Yeah, you be telling her, different, different, go on.
I put them all in your pile, Martin. Merry Christmas to you.
I'm glad Martin's catching.
I am too.
So Jay needs some.
She just told me, she wanted to pay for everybody's...
No, no.
Don't.
You can go ahead and pay him, he don't care.
Finds me, that's why I'm already caught. Boy, son, that'd be fast.
Get this one out.
Just, there's another thing, and I was still on hold for Martin, getting to the bottom of the pile.
That's where I'm always at.
And just go do the job.
Wow.
Yeah, like...
What was that?
Surely that more than one tire, isn't it? I didn't look on the back of it, but pretty expensive tire.
Yeah, it's a grader tire.
Yeah.
You know, them grader tires seem like they go in threes.
Really?
Well, I'm gonna get them.
Oh.
Dang, that pump looks a high dollar, doesn't it?
Boy, you wouldn't believe what it did to that track hole.
I got to the one they were putting it on for a little bit.
It made that track hole, it, like, so much faster than turning it into a new one. That pump's the hardest one to have.
Oh, yeah.
They said, you had to, when you start turning it, you better get off of it or you go all the way around before you stop.
That would make the operator on the tow.
Said he thought they put a higher gear on it.
The guy on the 200 or 210?
My one, that was...
The 200, yeah. Couldn't remember what.
Already had my first Mack truck doing that, too.
Yeah, you told me that on the radio. What was the problem there?
Oh, the fuel line by the air conditioner.
Had the same thing.
Really?
Yeah.
That's not good. So far, I haven't had that happen.
Well, that's why we're telling you.
Probably will.
One quits out on the road, one quits out on the road, no fuel in the fuel filter, and nowhere to look.
Definitely.
You're number one, it's supposed to happen to you first. It did backwards. You got yours first, I mean...
We just had trouble with COAX came in on the TV. We finally got a gear, we did it ourselves, took them down there twice.
Name is the same. As soon as I miss, I'm back to you.
Oh, okay.
I was not getting any smaller.
Doesn't seem like it.
I keep forgetting about that.
Magic table that just keeps...
There's some of that?
Fake birthday candy, where you just keep trying to blow them out, they just keep lighting.
How long did yours be there?
One for a couple. I don't know if it's the exact same thing as the other one. Did you have radiator trouble when one of yours did?
Well, we had a piece of metal go through a condenser on one of Bob's tail, took it down there and had it fixed, and we never even used it. We took it out to haul some stuff to the road. We didn't have any air conditioning. We take it back down there, and the hole that that piece of metal went through was in the screen about a side of a quarter. They said there was another piece of metal that went through that same hole now and put another hole in the second condenser. Now, they, they failed to get the piece out behind it, the hole was behind it. I'm arguing with them now. They want us to pay for the second condenser. They didn't take the piece that went through the first one out, behind it was in the radiator and put a hole back. Now, how did that piece from the highway go through the same hole in that screen?
With your drivers, anything. I said that on camera too, Brett.
It, uh, didn't happen.
I loaned them one of my trucks and tried to load their dozer and looked at it.
Yeah, I backed the dozer in front of that one. That was only kind of dry.
Jay was driving the dozer too, wasn't he?
Nope, yeah, that was at that time. It wasn't his fault. Truck driver pulled right up behind him when he come down the...
Probably missed your two on one, wasn't it?
It was, it was 52's truck.
And truck driver, right?
No, it was my driver.
My guys do stuff, too.
Trying to help you out, get out of it today.
I had one guy load a tractor over the back of one of his half-ten pickups one day.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
How'd that work out?
Tailgate was rearranged pretty good.
You buy a new bed for the pickup, is what you do. It isn't bad when you back over something. It's when you parked it there and back over it, it's the best.
Yeah.
Like they had a gas meter hit in town the other day, just some manual button.
Watch that one. Can you get it, too?
Oh, man.
Hear your nose?
Looked like, it was like they backed the trailer over it, hit it, and then pulled back forward to get off, but it was...
Really?
It was spewing gas pretty good.
Run over gas, I run over two gas containers in my life. I promised the gas man after I ran over the first one, I would never do it again. Fifteen years later, I did it again. It was a saved gas.
Oh, no.
And I said, "I thought I told you," he said, "I thought you told me you wouldn't do that again." When you park your pickup conveniently right up to one where you can't see it, that's a good place to park, and you get your pickup and drop right over the top of it. I did that twice.
You know what they say about the third time you try?
I didn't do it the third time yet.
Yet.
This guy was like, I can't remember where he was from, but he came in here and was like, "Ugh, I'm not fixing it. I can't fix that till Monday." It was like Saturday night.
It's always on a weekend or it's snowing.
We need to cancel that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put your...
The first one I did was on a day just like this, snowing and trapping.
Sure the fire department loves you too.
Didn't call the fire department out. That was back, my pickup, I had to go get a forklift, but my pickup up off it.
The fire hydrant wanted us to pull it into a spot in Burlington and didn't stay. This fire, this fire hydrant, you got them pretty good for them to budge.
Yeah. If you ask me, yours aren't too bad.
No.
But if you high-center on them, you know, if you drive up on them and high-center...
Best part was this guy's buddies were out there taking pictures while the cops were talking. One of the cop was walking to stand back.
Oh, Jay, don't forget we have a textual friction meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, he just told me the meeting with the forecourt department is canceled.
Oh, so...
They wouldn't tell us what time they're gonna be or they're gonna control the forecourt. The forecourt's gonna burn the canyon, burn the trees out of the canyon, and we're supposed to, they've got a program for that. Fought to meet tomorrow, but they're called or ain't said the weather's too bad.
It's a perfect time to come start burning, though.
I don't know that. I thought they, he told me they were coming from Lottner or somewhere quite late.
I knew they wanted some of those professionals.
How close is that a well over to that canyon?
You know what? I told him how to get that down. He should thinking about it.
Out in the middle of a snowstorm with match.
Well, when they caught fire before, the fire department should have been 30 minutes late getting there.
I think the same thing happened when the, when the city had that burnt pile over in NoHo, too.
Chad and I took care of that one. We sent the fire department home. We, uh, kinda fanned it a little bit, let the rest of it burn and put the remainder in a hole, and he was running the track hole and I was running the dozer, and we got that one.
It wasn't gonna go.
We got time to go. That was the third time we were there on that fire.
It wasn't going anywhere.
No.
Shame the fire department's too good.
Yeah, we got a, we got a good fire department here.
Especially down to the...
I used to kid the guys up at Cowal, "You guys are the best fire department in the world. You've never lost a foundation yet."
Yep. We, after our comment, too, we've never lost a foundation. That won't be hard to get down.
It won't? Just take cable around?
Take a cable around it and hook that sliding hook in it, and you have plenty of cable on your winch to get out there. When you pull it in, it'll, that's what we used to take sawl of it down.
Just take two cats, hang on each end of the cable, and drive through it.
Yeah, or you can do that, too, if you don't have a winch on the back, which none of us do, I don't think.
That'd be fun, do that.
Yeah.
Make a movie.
City didn't want it. I think, we'll take it, they'll take it after you put the, after you tear the building, your elevator down.
The reason we've had a problem is well around half of it.
Yeah.
Do you want the other cat?
Come on.
Come on.
You'll have to talk to them and see what they say.
Tell them you'll, tell them you'll tear down that wall and off.
They would, that would sure work. I, I know that would work to do that. Of course, I told them, we called several fire departments in, started a fire, having practice there for the department. They would do that. We've done it at Burlington, we've done it at Amherita. I don't know why you couldn't do it at Cherokee.
Would that be a good one for practice?
That'd be super good training, particularly that one.
Wouldn't want to send anybody in it.
No, you want to make sure it's cleared out.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a good way to do it.
Yeah. We did a search and rescue practice training on last Thursday.
Put a mannequin in there and let it haul it out.
First thing I went in on the training, it was like, it was that big mannequin that Alba has, 350 pounds.
Yeah.
Tried to pull that thing off the bed. I was like, "Oh."
Yeah, it was quite a deal.
It's heavy. Nice work. Just burn it with the forecourt department here, too. They can help.
That's what I just said. If it's close enough to the canyon, you just have a party. But the highway accident.
Somebody told me a pair of rings still had lots of stuff going there in the Brooklyn of Vienna and other stuff in there, David. The key on it for a while.
That's not any good anymore.
No? I wouldn't think so.
Also wouldn't want to be the one to go in there and try to get stuff out.
Went up to the top of it, and he was coming to help and clean out, about 30 years ago. I wouldn't want to go up to the top of it now.
Wouldn't trust the ladder to climb up to the top.
Who?
I climbed down one of those ladders at Burlington one year.
Yeah, yeah.
It was about three-quarters of the way up to the top on A, and tire went out. Climbed down, got between, I figured all the way down about between the elevator and the, the scales, tire came back on. There's probably an inch of dust on every one of those grounds, too.
Airtail, she's calling me. "Oh, there's a beautiful sight at night. I'd be up there and see all the, you know, combines and stuff in the field." I'm like, "I'll take your word for it. Not gonna go up there."
I mean, it's, it's, well, while I was in a bunch of patches, there wasn't really a ledge on A. I mean, good, but... This is another summer that I worked there, they had all the bad tires that go up there, you could just watch them fight the tires from the top.
That tower that he was in the rest home, you can get on top of it.
That's what I tried to...
And you can watch the cars driving down Van Bier and it's like...
Yeah.
We, we probably didn't put a banner on it when I senior in high school. We got down there, it's known, and every one of our vehicles were before.
Uh-oh.
Say y'all. We, we got a, but they told us down there, said we pay $75 a light. That was back in 64, to get the light replaced, and we told them, "Next time, call us. We're gonna put those lights up there for that kind of money."
Yeah. Did they ever call you?
No, never did.
You can make good money climbing up town, too.
Oh, boy.
Hope, hope that someone else make a good money.
You seen that old boy that steps in off that high line and to the helicopter?
No.
Get up on YouTube. I, there's no way. He clear up top there, helicopter pulls up the sun, he just clips a safety on it, steps over.
Ooh.
Oh, man.
I'm moving, shit, damn, I'm working things. I already heard. Blanket, park it somewhere there. Moving, step D blanket, pick the pushover on three.
Guys are getting fast, I can't keep up.
Oh, we don't, yeah, we do have road crossing problem here. Oh, we don't, yeah, we do have road crossing permit. Gas where the old go.
Hey, you gotta drill them in your ear.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm only gay.
He's smiling, looking at it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. A lot of those people up north or those people Spanish have waited a while to get their checks.
Not calling yet.
Last month. My mom's was about, our place was about a week late.
Well, my dad did. It was about a week late.
I think my mom talked to Sue Powers and theirs was, and Jack, Jack Tars was. We were, everything was home a week late. It's a lot of people nervous, though.
Yeah.
It's almost like, you may get Christmas, you may not get Christmas. We'll see.
What, they, Jeez, man, Willoughby talk about getting Las Vegas.
I just kinda thought he had a jackpot here.
Man, can we borrow some money?
Oh, you gotta be kidding. And they're still coming.
And they're good landmines, too.
I know. It's like, are you serious?
I'm running out of ink on my pen.
He knows one of them, they were on the stake a while ago. We should have had Marvin going ahead and paid him.
He made up.
All the money he's got.
He made up the difference for the whole year. Gee, man, well, there you go. Is this for a year? Did you let them wait till the end of the year to pay all these? Or are they gonna be doing that much drilling in your area?
There's two right there on the highway.
Yeah.
I'll make it my, I'll make it my.
Okay. All in favor.
Merry Christmas.
That's what I told him. Nancy, I said, I asked you Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
What'd that tow them up to? Fifteen thousand?
I've got it on my desk. I was just telling him. I left that stack on my desk. I was showing him.
Yeah, it was way up there. Yeah, it's all right. I don't really want to.
Private property access even with the different two.
These are the original, so that's probably.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I just have copies. You work for it. The other one I didn't get on there.
Oh, one don't write any better than he always did, does he?
You have two left?
Wait a minute. Maybe we can only sign one. This one is all of its number. That one's all you can sign.
I'll try.
You did? I called her off.
Except that access even.
Second.
All in favor.
Wonder why she sent both of those?
She sent it Friday, but I'd already, I had already.
Oh, is that what?
Or it was sent it Thursday, but I had already posted the agenda and I, I called Lena on another day and let her know that I called him this morning and told him also, but you may have already escaped by that time.
Yeah.
Open six months' bids.
Short cut there. You get two and I get.
No, I just left the pile here in the middle. Just left the pile here in the middle. And I'm pretty slow.
A C G materials. Make sure that is, I guess you know that is about a few.
I'm sorry.
A C C is about a few.
Oh, sure. Nah, make sure that second page is.
Everything is on, damn.
Dubrow.
You want them backing off of it?
Dubrow, Dubrow.
I know who that is. Dubrow.
Dubrow. Herbie Smith machine.
You know what happens, you see?
He just needs it, too, once in a while.
I'll come through, I'll come through.
Herb gone ashbowl.
United States juice.
He's that nice by morning.
He is. Looks so.
Coming from construction.
C D seven, County Energy District Authority. C D, is that right?
Yeah, it's in the.
C D seven.
Circle S paving.
C B, North Blue one or White one?
Coastal Energy.
I can't, I can't get it. I can't get this one. They taped the end of it. I'll use my knife.
It's really sealed.
Yeah.
One in Billy's house.
I know where I want to go. Oscars.
Marty Marriott. Take us from there, he just took.
Yeah. What do you mean?
That's the one he just.
Oh.
You made one underneath.
Yeah, that's moved in there and that's moved in there.
Logan County. We was helping them all we could, that was.
Thank you, man.
Still crapped it down out there a little bit. Not much of it.
Ashbowl and fuel.
I'm making motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
This is transportation.
Transportation of humans.
They're paying us.
Yeah, that's, that's the money, reimbursement. I move we accept it.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any unforeseen business, move we agree.
I'll second that, too.
All in favor?